Inspections Division Administrator, can you guys see the slide deck on your screens there?
Yes.
Cool. All right, so before we get started on kind of the program, I'm going to introduce and just kind of point out, we've got a representative from Wickman Pig here. We've got some representatives from Smithfield and we've got representatives from Darlin on the way. They've all been great to work with. They've been investing heavily in their facilities, reviewing their operations. And I think that when we get into the data, you'll see that there's been some noticeable impacts. Also here is Casey Dorn. Casey's carried most of the water on this project for us, so he's done a great job and I appreciate him for it. With that, one last thing is that we're not necessarily here today to point the finger at anybody. We're here to look at data, so we're not gonna, we're not going to get into pointing fingers at any of our three stakeholders. And I really do mean that they're stakeholders. We're not going to talk about how dare you do this and how dare you do that. We're talking data and what next steps could be, so. Here's an overview of what the items are that we're going to go through. Shout out to Communications for helping me put this slide deck together. I think it looks great. So we have been involved in odor enforcement here in the city for over 20 years. This is an aerial photo showing what the current conditions look like out in the MSC2 area. So that is where my cursor is right now. That's the MSC2. Uh oh. That's the MSC1. And that's the intersection of Southeast 18th and Mari. So we'll call this our epicenter for our odor monitoring. This is what it looks like in 2023. This is what it looked like in the 1930s. So you can see between the two slides. The areas we're specifically looking at are right here, right here, and right here. They're all ag-adjacent industries. And they've all been there for going on 100 years now. So as we go into this, I just want to make sure we've got realistic expectations on what we can and can't do. We cannot eliminate odors entirely. We can hope to cut off the peaks of the really bad days. And I think that we're making good progress on that. But these industries have been here for a very long time. They have hundreds, if not over 1,000 people working at the facilities between the three of them. And they do, they do serve a very important part of our state's ag industry. So being very realistic about what we can and can't do on this program. So what's mapping out there at the bottom is the timeline for what the current ordinance allows for our odor enforcement program. If we receive 10 complaints in a six-hour period, it's triggered what's called an odor alert condition. If the odor alert condition is called in or is triggered, staff will come into the office, will map out the location of the complaints versus the wind patterns, will drive upwind to the complaints, and then we'll try to find where they're coming from. If we can find where they're coming from, the odor sources will be deemed a non-significant odor generator. Whether or not it's a strong smell or not, that is the term used in the code. So a non-significant odor generator, 10 complaints in a six-hour period, and we can find out where it's coming from. If we can find the same non-significant odor generator three times in a 90-day period, then that stakeholder or that industry or whoever it is, they would be deemed to be a significant odor generator. And the distinction between those is kind of important because it lays out different paths for enforcement under the current code. Remember, this is the current code that we kind of have on pause as we collect data. We currently receive complaints through Answer Plus. It's a 24-hour answering service. Those complaints are put in writing and emailed and faxed to us. And then we have an online form that we've created, and we'll get into that a little bit later. The online form is part of our critical data collection for this program that we're doing right now. On the left is what happens if we find somebody to be a non-significant odor generator. And on the right is what happens if we find somebody to be a significant odor generator. A non-significant odor generator, I'm going to be honest with you, it's a stern warning in writing. A significant odor generator gets pretty intense. We can require an odor control permit. The code says we can require the operators to show us their logs and review their operations for the day. And I think that there is reference towards the end of the significant odor generator portion of the code that says that we can seek legal action to remedy the issue.
Have we ever declared someone a significant odor generator or is that common?
I think that there's been one situation where somebody is identified as a significant odor generator, but it still stinks, so I don't know how impactful it was.
Right. My question is really, are we, are we using the code? And if we've done it once in the 20 or 30 years this has been in place and the smell is ongoing and regular, it means we have not used, we have not used this code.
Right.
This is ineffective.
Yeah, the code as it's currently written is not as effective as it could be. I don't know if I'd say ineffective. I've been here since August of '22, as you guys all know. And since I've been here, there's been two non-significant odor generating events. One of them wasn't even located in the city at the moment. Somebody's spreading chicken manure out in Waki. And then the other one, we went through the process, we did the notification, the letter, we met with them. To answer your question, there has been one, and I think it was like in 2008, 2010 era. We just don't get to the complaint thresholds that often and three times within the 90 days to identify the significant odor generator.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the bigger problem with the code is you have to, the non-significant odor generator is maybe ineffective too.
Right.
So we don't get to the threshold of significant odor generator because of the way we set up this non-significant.
Exactly. Right.
You're going to get to that, I'll wait, but on just the volume of calls or complaints over a period of time?
Yeah, I've got it all mapped out actually for the monitoring period. And over the last 10 years, we get somewhere between 200 and 300, 400 complaints per year. So majority of those coming during the summer. So this kind of goes into the non-significant odor generator criteria again. The Answer Plus will call us, will come in. So Casey and I came in on a beautiful September night about six months ago and drove around in a Prius, ended up in Waki, so. Remember that it's all reactive and complaint-based. So that's the big takeaway from how we're currently doing thing, reactive and complaint-based. And if it's complaint-based, we can't say that there is a hard number by which we can tie these complaints to.
And Dalton, would it be fair to say that some people who have smelled the odor before and called and nothing happened?
Right.
Have given up?
I think you'd probably say that, yeah. Yep.
Or at least that's what some people in the East Village and in Ward 4 say, well, you know, you're not doing anything, so.
Right.
So there may be more cases that just don't get logged.
Oh.
People don't call.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
All right, so you guys remember back in, starting in like the spring of '22 through the fall of '22, the city did an odor study with Arcane Associates. We're going to kind of go through the findings of that methodology, and then we'll get into the next, the real reason we're here today. So the six deliverables from that study are listed here on the screen. The only one of the six is that we did not construct and run an air dispersion model just because it was not necessary. Overview of the study is that Arcane Associates identified 10 potential odor emitters in the city of Des Moines. And they grouped the areas that we get complaints in into five key areas. And we'll kind of get into the five key areas here in a minute. Of the 10 facilities that they studied, three were confirmed to be odor emitters. Now, significant, non-significant, not even going there. When they did their analysis, they found that they stunk, in layman's terms. So here are the five complaint areas that we were talking about just a second ago. They're all generally northwest and northwest of the facilities that we're currently studying. So think MSC2, that ballpark. Area 1 is the biggest, and we receive most of the complaints in that area. Well, Areas 1, 2, and 3, we get most of the complaints. Area 1 is the biggest, and to kind of contextualize it for you, the west boundary of Area 1 is about like the Waveland Cafe area-ish, maybe a little further west of there. And it's important to point out that these complaint areas aren't what was observed. These are complaints that we received, so we have a log of them. They mapped them all out, and they all pretty much fit in those five boxes. The recommendations from that Arcane Associates study was to purchase a nasal ranger and then to set a threshold based off of those nasal rangers in the code. Now, this thing on the right, this is a nasal ranger. It basically tells you if you take how many units of clean air and mix it with one or how many units of dirty air, how often, or how, what's the intensity at which you can smell it? So if you've got environment or atmospheric air from around the areas that we're looking at, and you take one part of that air and you take six parts of the clean air and you mix them together, and you can still smell it, you know that it's higher than a 6:1 or a 1:6 dilution threshold. So the recommendation from the study, among a few other things, is that we buy one of these or a handful of these, and then we set thresholds based off of these in the code. But remember, we're trying to get away from reactive if we can. So we would only know what those readings are if we get a situation where we got to go out and take readings. And even then, we don't know what the readings were instantaneously, so it's all reactive. So we ultimately did not move forward with the nasal ranger for two reasons. And one of them, like we just talked about, is after the odors have left the facility, and it doesn't provide real-time data. So let's say we get a complaint up in Riverbend. Well, by the time that air has left, let's say the MSC2, air leaves MSC2 and there's a 5 mile an hour wind, it could be an hour or more before that odor plume makes it up to Riverbend. And so we get the complaints up in Riverbend, but what actually happened, happened an hour and a half before at the facilities. So then we take our nasal rangers out to the facilities. We don't actually know what the readings were at the time of the event that caused the plume to go up to Riverbend. Does that make sense? The second reason that we did not go with the nasal rangers is because the data that we would capture on those can't be necessarily independently verified. So if we've got, think of it like a thermometer. You stick a thermometer in a bucket of water, here's what the reading is. Indisputable, this is what the temperature is of that water. If you tell the temperature of the water by sticking your hand in it, well, this is pretty darn hot. What's pretty darn hot for me is not pretty darn hot for somebody else. So there's no way that we would be able to say that we're an impartial third party and that we were collecting data impartially. And so that is the second reason that we did not go with the nasal ranger.
And in addition, if I called in at 6:00 AM and said it's ungodly in the East Village, if your guys don't come on to work until 8:00 AM.
Well, and that was another thing, is we would have to have some kind of an on-call. This is not why we did not go with it, but it's another challenge. We'd have to have an on-call plan to bring people in specifically to sniff. And if that only happens once or twice a year, that could actually get quite expensive, so. So if not the nasal rangers, then what? Here's the five criteria that we looked into or that we wanted when determining what tool that we wanted to use to better improve this odor enforcement program. So the five criteria are real-time collection of data, extremely accurate, cellular interconnection and web-based platform, atmospheric modeling, so wind pattern, wind direction, wind speed, and a complaint tracking and mapping platform. So I reached out to agencies across the country, and I'm talking Jacksonville, Florida, to Seattle, Washington, Camden County, New Jersey, to Houston, Texas, and a couple dozen in between. And the tool that we found that was most suited to use for our situation was a platform called EnviroSuite. Before we get into the EnviroSuite, are there any questions on kind of where we've been before we get into what we're doing now? Perfect. So the city council approved a contract with EnviroSuite back in August of '23. We are measuring H2S, NH3, and VOCs. Those are the three constituents that are most commonly associated with odors at rendering and packing plants. And the platform tracks wind speed, wind direction, humidity, temperature, atmospheric pressure, and solar radiation. Here's a picture of what one of the 10 monitors looks like. This one is mounted on the wall just outside on the south side of the MSC2. And the figure up on the right is looking up into the sensor what it looks like. And those little colorful half-circles are the little pucks that we install into the sensor that detect the constituents we're measuring. Yeah.
So those little colored pieces, they detect different?
Yes.
Different odors? And so can we change those out if we wanted to detect?
We could, yeah.
A broader range?
So we are, and we'll kind of get to this in a minute about kind of how we're trailblazing here. We are not the city, city organizations are not usually the customer for this organization. The customer is usually the industry stakeholder. So a landfill, a quarry, a water treatment plant. It is not usually the city that is asking them to come in and do this. And so it's usually people like Darling, Smithfield, Wickman that are hiring this out, or Martin Marietta, or Minat, or somebody else. We are currently monitoring with three constituents in mind. They can also track, I think they can track sound, dust, and then I'm not sure the other odor-causing particles. But the three big ones are H2S, NH3, and VOC. So again, remember, this is our focus area, and we're going to call this the epicenter. Uh oh. Right here at Southeast 18th and Mari, MSC2. MSC1's up here a bit. The 10 monitors are noted on this map by a red X. So we've got each of the identified stakeholders from the Arcane Associates study. We've got them pretty well surrounded. And then we've got a weather station on the roof of the MSC2 building. And we needed to have a weather station close to the system or the modeling platform so that we can get as close as accurate possible wind, speed, and direction are the big ones. Because what the wind is doing here is a little bit different than what the wind's doing at the airport, for example. We're going to get into this in great length here in a bit, but this is what the monitoring system looks like live. So those green fans show. We're going to look at, let's say, monitor number four right here. You see there's this funnel? So think of this in reverse of a weather sock or a weather vane. The wind is coming from the northeast in this situation, and it's blowing to the southwest. So any odors that are generated in the area covered by this green funnel is getting funneled to this odor monitor and then kicked out to the southwest. So it's a little counterintuitive, think again, opposite of a windsock or a weather vane. In this situation, there was something going on up in this area. The fan turns red, the monitor turns red. We're measuring, I believe, H2S in this situation. So we know that there's something going on. Now, that's not saying that we're going to be getting complaints about it, but we know that we have high readings for H2S somewhere up northeast of Monitor 10.
And Dalton, of the three odors that you're monitoring, which one would be the strongest that alerts the noses of the residents or employees?
I'm glad you asked, actually. We have quite a bit on that in a minute, but it's H2S and VOCs for the most part. Yep. And the data does bear that out. This is a screenshot of what our monitoring platform looks like. Each of these is a complaint ticket. So somebody calls in a complaint, submits a complaint online. We log it into the system, time, date, location. And then the wind, the modeling platform will track that plume from that point in time and place upwind. So each of these, and we'll get into this with our two odor events that we're going to review, each of these can be clicked on, and it'll show you a trajectory. It'll show you the weather conditions for that day. Everything you want to know about what's going on in the world for that date and time can be found on these complaints. So let's pretend we're clicking on a complaint. We're getting into the modeling and complaint tracking platform. This right here, T minus zero or upstream, is where the complaint or the odor was observed and the complaint was received. So when somebody calls in a complaint, we don't necessarily care where they are when they report it. We want to know where they were when they noticed it. T minus 60 in this situation is where the odor plume came from. So on this specific complaint, the odor plume came from somewhere east of the southeast 14th corridor. And then southwest of the Indianola Road connector right there.
And obviously, there's nothing there other than maybe someone's putting manure down in the field and
Right.
and that's, sometimes smell that.
Right.
Right.
And we are going to get into a very real situation where exactly that happened. With the system that we've got right now, we can map out where the complaints came from. We can either do a cluster map or a heat map. This is showing 107 tickets. This is not for the full duration of our modeling period. So the data I'm going to be showing you is going to be from mid-October until about early April. So we had quite a bit of data to dig through, so I don't have data for the month of April included in this presentation, but I do think we have enough to kind of paint the picture of where we're at. We can set the system up to send out automated alerts. So right now, we get alerts when H2S levels go above 20 parts per billion and 40 parts per billion. Those are somewhat arbitrary numbers, those thresholds themselves. Those are what have been used by other EnviroSuite customers across the country. One of our recommendations is going to be refining many parts of this system, but remember the threshold capability there.
Who's the alert? The company that we think that maybe is unleashing the odors or?
That's a good point. So the alerts go to us right now with the city. Should have brought this up. EnviroSuite does not charge for additional logins. And so Darling and Smithfield are customers on this program as well.
Okay.
We kept giving them screenshots of this, or I'd be at my computer and I'd text them a picture of it, a low-quality picture, and they'd say, well, it'd be really nice if I could see this in real time.
Right.
It really would. So they are contributing to this program financially on equal footing with the city. They have logins, they log in and see exactly what's happening, so they're keeping an eye on themselves as well.
Excellent. In real time.
In real time.
Excellent.
Thank you for bringing that up, I forgot about that. This is a very simple data trend report I can show you. This is two monitor, this is one monitor for both H2S and VOC over about a 24-hour period. I can do this, or we can do this for any monitor, for any timeframe, for any of the three constituents. The data can become crushing, so we really got to tease out what it is we're looking for. So one of the items that Mr. Boss really wanted through this program was some kind of a data report so that the residents know what it is we're finding. So we've been pushing those out onto the website. I got a QR code coming up here in a second. dsm.city, go to Departments, Neighborhood Services, Neighborhood Inspections, Odor. So you can report odor complaints there, and you can see our data trend reports. We just got our April odor report uploaded on Friday. I think. I think, yeah. I know it's done, actually, no, it's not posted yet because I got to review it still. But it's done, it'll be up this week. So here's a QR code to the odor reports. Yeah, the free one gives me a dinosaur on it, and I don't know how to. So if anybody wants to snap a QR code picture of that, don't go through the report right now, but. All right, so that's a summary of the monitoring platform. Now we're going to dig into the data and two very key situations that we found over the last six months on that platform. Any questions before we move forward? And this is where the data's going to start to get kind of heavy. All good?
Do you want to share, when you said that Darling and Smithfield are partners or they're playing a role, do you want to share the amount that they're, to what extent that they're contributing to this?
So we have, we're splitting the cost about a third, a third each stakeholder, so City, Darling, Smithfield. So, yep. Which makes it a much more sustainable program moving forward, obviously.
Absolutely.
An interest in this too.
Big time, big time. And kind of towards the end, we're going to talk about how they really are, this is not an oppositional relationship with myself and the stakeholders. This is how are we going to work together to improve it? How are we going to show exactly what is the issue? And we'll get into kind of some of the stuff they're doing. So our communications team did a stellar job after we got this program installed. We actually really needed their help getting the word out because we needed complaints. And I know you get on social media and people, oh, the city doesn't do anything with complaints. I can only speak since August of '22 when I got here. And I know that since this program went online, the complaints are actually a very key part of the data. Without the complaint data, none of this really matters. So we worked with communications, put together a huge comms push. It got picked up locally, and then it started getting picked up regionally, got picked up nationally a little bit. So what we're doing is very different than what has been done elsewhere. And kind of more on this when we get to the recommendations and the next steps. I'm going to be asking or kind of telling you, we're moving towards another communications push on this too. We wanted to make it as easy as possible for people to report an odor complaint. So communications put together a form on our website. Somebody save a bookmark to that on your phone, text it to your buddies. You submit that odor complaint. We get an email, we log the complaint, we map it out. So it doesn't matter how we get it. I can get a text message, Mr. Boss can give me a call, an email, word of mouth. If we get a complaint, it ends up in the system now. There's been state agencies interested in the program, other cities across the country that have reached out. One of the cities we reached out to back, or I talked to back in like January of '23, they have actually, they saw the news stories, thanks comms, and they followed up with me to say, how's it going? Would you mind if we kind of copy what you're doing? Absolutely. So what we're doing is pretty unique. Okay, and this is where it's going to get heavy. And if you've got questions about the data, please stop me because this is truly a data-driven conversation, and it's got to make sense to have meaningful conversation about it. If you go to the odor report on the Neighborhood Inspections website, you'll see something that looks kind of like this. This is for the monitoring period so far. You can see through March of '24, we've received 181 complaints. Most of the complaints come in between 6:00 in the morning and 5:00 at night, which makes sense, that's when people are awake, right? Awake downtown, moving around. This word cloud right here is a general description of the odor, and that is pulled straight out of the complaints that we receive. So this isn't Dalton saying, well, it smells more rotting than it does putra today. This is a map of where the complaints come from. And the colors on this map are affiliated with the time of day that those complaints were received. Here's the number of complaints we've received per month. And this is the number of complaints per day. This graph is important. The red bars on this graph are days that we've received five or more complaints in a single 24-hour period. There have been 10 such events where we received five complaints in a 24-hour period. Those dates are listed down here at the bottom of the screen and we're going to dig into two of them and see what exactly was going on. Uh, we could dig into all ten, but I'd need several hours for this presentation, I think, to give you an idea of where we're at, where we're going, what we need to do, two of them is efficient. So this table is called a risk multi-series report. Each of the lines on this table is a different area, complaint area of town as identified through the RK associate study. If the wind, and this is the criteria for the risk. So let's say for area one, right here. If the wind speed is greater than five miles per hour and the wind is out of the east southeast or the southeast, five miles an hour, east southeast, southeast and risk area one, we have an extreme risk of an odor issue. That makes sense? Let's go for area four. If the wind speed is less than two and a half miles per hour and the wind is out of the southeast or the south southeast or these wind degrees, we know that we have an extreme risk of odor complaints in risk area four, which is like the parks neighborhood issue. Um, straight north of two thirty-five, east of the river. So does the risk report make sense? Okay. So we're going to dig into two key dates. The first date is November fifth of twenty twenty-three. We received, yeah.
Have a question if you could.
Go back. This one?
Yeah. I mean, so the risk is greater. I, I guess if a plume gets out, we're going to likely get the complaints if the wind is blowing in the right way and that, that's what the extreme is.
One hundred percent.
But you still have the issue with the, with whatever the odor is escaping in, in less extreme. So it's going to be concentrated maybe around, around some of the others. So the odor is still an issue, but the issue for our, our residents is going to be more based on, based on what the wind is doing at the time the odor is released.
Right.
Is that the right way to read this?
Yeah, it's a classic. If a tree falls in the woods and there's no one there to hear it, you know what I mean? And so it kind of facetiously, we've been saying, there's two ways that we can solve this for sure. One of them is invent a pig that never stinks and one of them is control the wind and we can't do either of those. So um, yeah, we still do have odors coming from those facilities probably. We just don't get complaints about it because if you look at this map, if the wind is blowing from the northwest and we've got a, we've got a chart showing that's what it usually does. The blends from, wind is blowing from the southwest, it's blowing down the river valley and there's not a whole lot of population over here. This is mostly industrial. So probably still stinks, just no one's complaining about it. It's a good observation though. Did I answer your question?
Yep.
So here's that risk report we went through on the last slide saying winds out of the southeast and the different wind speeds. This is the risk. So on November twenty, on November fifth of twenty twenty-three, we had a very low risk of odor basically in all of the five risk areas except for risk area five between five and six o'clock in the morning. So very low risk. Green is good. Um, if when we're having odor issues, it is not usually green. So we had a lot of complaints on that day. So the risk areas were green. The wind did not show that we should have been getting complaints. What was going on? Well, the complaints came in generally from six to eleven PM. I'm sorry, from uh, from noon to eleven PM generally. And the complaints were all generally straight south of the modeling area or the area that we're taking a look at. So MSC two is right in the middle of those colorful boxes. The complaints generally came in south of here. And this complaint, I believe, somebody put in where they were when they reported it and not when they smelled it. So um, I don't know if our data input was the greatest on that one, but I can't change it. I mean, I could change it, but it corrupt the data, so I'm not going to do that. You remember the plumes we showed you earlier, tracking where they observed it versus where the, where the odor came from? Well, T minus zero is where each of these different complaints came from. These are all different complaints. We mapped out all of them for that day. Well, T minus zero, we're talking, you know, Easter Lake-ish area, southeastern lake. And it shows that the plume came from somewhere south of there. So our, our risk report said that it probably wasn't going to be a stinky day. And the plume shows that it came from somewhere south of where they received it. So what was going on? And then here's the other five trajectories showing where it came from, along with the description of the odors as reported by the observers. So these are their words. So these are the first few reasons that we do not believe that the events on November fifth are attributed to the three stakeholders that we're looking at. So we're going to show you this one is where we don't think it was them and the next one where we think it, it could have been them.
Question, but what do we do with this piece? I mean, we, we didn't attribute it to the stakeholders, but from a quality of life perspective,
Right.
it's just as important, right?
Very much so. So we actually went out and field verified what was going on here. Um, current.
Huh? Right. I mean, we want to fix that just like we want to fix the others if we can.
Yep. It's chicken manure.
Right.
Chicken manure.
Right, I, I understand.
Yeah.
So did we track the specific operation that was doing that? And was that in Pope County? Like, was it outside of Pope County? Was it in Pope County? Like, was there any?
Outside of Des Moines possibly.
Anything that we can do from a follow-up collaboratively on something like that?
Um, this is all something I think we probably need to talk about in the ordinance if that is something that we want to move forward with. Uh, so we did, we did find exactly where it was coming from. We did it the old fashioned way, get in the Prius, drive around with the windows down. Um, it was a farm field. It was in the city limits and they're spreading chicken litter. So we do have quite a bit of ag down on the southeast side of town over Mr. Gatto's area. Um, we live in an ag state, so I, what to do about it after that? That is very much a council policy decision, but uh, we can certainly have conversations. The code does not support us taking any enforcement on that unless we have three events in a ninety day period and it's just very unlikely for that to happen. Now what I'm going to get into, this event and the event that we can attribute to something happening out at the facilities. The format of these slides is going to look the same, okay? So this graph is showing us the volatile organic compounds as measured at each of the ten monitors over a twenty-four hour period as measured in parts per billion. So the different monitors are shown by the colors. The hour of the day is shown by these numbers. So thirteen would be one o'clock, one o'clock PM. And the location of the monitors is shown on this map on the left. This right here is called the wind rose. So the wind rose is basically telling us where the wind was coming from and how hard it was blowing. The wind rose, and remember the monitors, the weather monitors on top of the MSC two, the wind rose shows that the wind was out of the south generally. It swirled a bit, but it was out of the south and it was blowing pretty good. Now this is a pollution rose. The pollution rose marries up the monitor readings, the data, the, the levels that we're getting the readings at and a wind rose. So this is where it gets a little heavy on the data side of things, so. Let's look at uh, monitor five. So remember that, that the, the length of these legs is going to be the same on each of these pollution roses. So it doesn't matter if you're at number one or number ten, they're all going to look the same because it's all, the, the length of the legs or the funnels is showing where the wind was coming from and how fast it was blowing. The color on a pollution rose tells us the concentration of readings. So for monitor five, we had slightly higher readings out of the southeast, which would make sense. I mean, we're coming from our monitoring area. But nothing that can really be attributed to these facilities causing those complaints. Because remember, the complaints were way down to the south. And so if we were going to contribute those complaints to these odor emitters, we would see plumes going to the north and they would be significantly higher than what we're seeing on any of these. This is the same thing that we looked at for VOC hourly data except for H two S. Again, very low readings for H two S all day. Um, this looks like a spike. Two parts per billion is not a spike and we will get into that in a bit, but um, generally no issues on H two S that day. Pollution roses, pollution roses show that it was pretty clear. And then NH three, again, this looks like a very high day. It's not, so um, NH three very rarely gets over one part per million. And then the same pollution rose for that date. So we are fairly certain for November fifth, twenty twenty-three that the odor complaints that we received cannot be attributed to the monitor, the areas that we're monitoring because the plumes um, when trajectoryed against the wind, they don't track back to the area. The risk report says that it was very unlikely and the readings that we got on the monitors don't support that the complaints came from that area. So for those reasons, we're pretty sure that November fifth was not attributed to um, the three stakeholders that we're kind of monitoring right now.
Do you have like a threshold in terms of what, what amount? I mean, as you said, the amounts that you were showing, what amount triggers an odor? Like for VOCs for the hydrogen sulfide?
Um, that's actually something that we get into towards the end here on identifying thresholds and stuff. Yep. Um, because the charge from the city to EnviroSuite during this and what we're trying to find out is at what level of readings do we get complaints? And so if it's the will of the council, we could take that threshold that we get complaints at, put it in the code and then base our enforcement off of that. Did I answer your question?
Well, it, it does, but it raises a whole series of questions.
Right.
I mean, I thought the whole point of this was to avoid a complaint-based system and identify a database.
Mm-hmm. So we're using the, yeah.
If you're, if you're creating a database system that is based on complaints, it's still essentially a complaint basis. I mean, and it's, it's not setting, part of what we should be doing is setting ourselves up to fix this over kind of over the long run and that, that's a more objective standard.
Yeah, very much so.
If I could insert though, that what we have to do at the beginning right now is line up the complaints, what is smelling bad enough that it, it issues a complaint to the data? So that we understand that, that when you reach this certain threshold on a data, we're likely to get complaints. We have to align those. So then we can just trust the data after that point.
That's why we're, isn't this why we're doing this whole study? We put this in so we could start developing a true system of developing an ordinance that we can do something with. But right now we were doing by smell our complaints, which really wasn't very.
They had to be the same described.
Right, so I think this is what this whole process is, is to try to find out how we can effectively develop a system.
Put her, she might smell it rotten and it didn't consistently and it was the same smell. So we were never able to report anything.
Well, yeah, I think that's what this whole process has been is, and I'm sure going forward we'll hear more, but uh, to develop a system that we can effectively diminish, we're never going to get rid of all of it. But that's the goal is to figure out how we can, so it's really the first process to actually do it in a fair, true data-driven way.
Or what was happening at four AM when a lot of people weren't up and about?
Right.
And um, so was there something going on in the area of east eighteenth and Mari that was uh, would, would awaken people later with the smell, so.
So what, uh, Mr. Manabon, what you're asking about is we're using the complaints to calibrate the system. Um, is there a technical industry standard at which you can smell H two S? Yeah, and it is extremely low. So what we're getting on these monitors sometimes twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred parts per billion. You can smell it like one part per billion. So one part per billion down at eighteenth and Mari, what does that smell like up here at City Hall? Nothing. Twenty parts per billion at eighteen and Mari, eighteenth and Mari, after it travels downtown, what's that smell like? Pretty bad. So we're using the complaints as kind of anecdotally truing up what we're collecting on the monitors. So um, and then as far as, as far as calibrating the risk based off of those complaints, we will get into that in some of the recommendations here towards the end. But we're going to calibrate the, the risk report based off of the wind direction, uh, the wind speed and the readings that we're getting at those monitors. So it will be data-based. All right, so that kind of wraps it up for November fifth. I'm going to show you one more example and I could, I could show you about a hundred of these, a hundred of these slide decks, but I'm going to spare you all it. So, yeah, thanks man. All right. So here is the risk report for December twentieth. Does anybody remember that week of Christmas? It was pretty bad. It was pretty bad. If you see uh, the red, remember green is good. There's some yellow in there, there's some red, so. The wind conditions, remember the risk, as we had it calibrated, the risk was higher on December twentieth than what we saw on November fifth. Most of the complaints came in um, between six and eleven AM. The complaints can be described using the words down there on the bottom left and the complaints came in from the area uh, shown on the heat map on the right.
It's a battery.
A battery? Oh, yeah.
Smelled it.
It depends if it's a Duracell or an Energizer.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Um, so kind of on that, on the words used to describe those odors, don't put too much weight into those and we'll kind of get into that under the recommend, I know I keep telling you, we'll get into that, I promise. I promise, yeah, we'll get there. Here's the trajectories from the odors, odor complaints for that day. So as you can see, the plume, it generally does go by the three odor emitters. And that was the, uh, the last four for that day. So remember I told you the format of the data presentation is going to look pretty much the same. Well, here's the VOC hourly data. And that's per monitor averaged per hour for each hour of the day. Here's the pollution roses for VOCs. So green is good, not seeing a ton here. Here is the H two S hourly data. So what was going on between about one in the morning and nine in the morning? Because remember, we got our complaints between six and eleven AM and our readings were highest six and eleven AM, six complaints came in. Our readings were highest before eleven AM. So we think that whatever happened on this date can be tied to H two S specifically. That is what was driving the complaints. Here's the pollution roses for those days. If you remember back to the November twentieth example, we did see um, some slightly higher, more colors on those pollution roses, but just the, the data doesn't support that the complaints were originated from the, the areas we're looking at. And then here's the NH three hourly data. And again, it looks like it spikes, but we just generally don't see much variation on NH three. So zero point three, I'm going to spare you the gory details, zero point three on NH three is not out of ordinary for us to see. So we can say that with reasonable certainty, there was something going on in that area that was contributing to odors that was causing complaints in the downtown area, River Bend area that day. Any questions about that? Okay. Alright, so here is a summary of our findings. You remember those 10 days that we received five or more complaints in one day? We reviewed those, we mapped out all the trajectories for all the complaints for those specific days, because we want to find what is causing odor complaints. The dates that are shown in red. Are dates that we can attribute complaints to something happening in the intersection of Southeast 18th and Mari MSC2 area. The ones that are in black here, like November 5th that we went through, we might've got a lot of complaints, but they were not attributable to the area we're looking at. We took those, those uh, 10 days, we chopped out four of them and then we can identify six of those days as critical days and we're going to use that like a vocabulary word now. So a critical day is a day in which we receive five or more complaints in a 24 hour period and those complaints can be attributed to the odor generators that we're studying. So a critical day is what we're going to kind of base our analysis off of going forward. The criteria or what the common denominator is across all these critical days is kind of um, summarized with these six points there at the bottom. So they are generally on weekdays between 6 AM and 5 PM. The weather forecast, remember that table, the green is good table? The weather forecast is categorized as extreme or high risk. Uh, the complaints came northwest of the alleged sources and the wind was out of the southeast. Uh, the odors are described as putrid, rotting, foul and rendering. We'll get into kind of the descriptors here in a minute, but those are generally the descriptors that were used. We see high concentrations of H2S and VOCs and the backward trajectories traced generally over or near the odor emitters. Any questions on kind of the summary? So this is kind of help, going to hopefully help guide some policy decisions here in a bit.
Can you go back to slide, what did you call it? Critical days was November 7th? When would you say this study started?
Uh, October 17th was the day the monitors went online. October 15th, middle of October.
And summer months are the?
Summer months are the worst.
Worst, so we haven't even covered.
Historically, yeah, yep. Okay, so remember, critical day, that's, that's going to be what we're looking at going forward. We're not looking at everything, we're looking at critical days. Critical day is a day we got a ton of complaints and we know, or we think it was coming from the sources. A wind rose for a critical day is shown here on the left. These are those six days. Generally, on a critical day, the wind is coming out of the southeast and there is almost no wind out of the northwest. So as we predicted, we got the data to show it now. On a normal day, we usually have winds out of the northwest. So this is showing you that the complaints are very, very heavily influenced by wind pattern. This red line, bracketed red line is the hourly averaged H2S. Over the course of a 24 hour period on a critical day. So we've got six critical days and on average, the H2S concentrations are higher between midnight and about noon, they start going down about 5 PM, they're back down to about even with every normal day. Now remember, the level of confidence in this, it's pretty wide because we don't have that much data yet. This is for six days. So this is for six days and this is for 170 days. So that's why we got much more confidence in this. But generally we can see that H2S on a critical day is higher between midnight and about five, uh, 5 PM. Does that make sense?
I mean, what's, what do you contribute that to?
Probably.
Okay.
Um, well, we'll show you, um, we got another slide that I think they'll kind of paint a picture.
Okay.
So that same hourly average data that we looked at for H2S can also be reviewed for VOCs. On a critical day, VOCs appear to be lower until about seven, eight o'clock in the morning. They're higher from seven or eight o'clock in the morning. Till about seven, eight o'clock at night.
Diurnal?
Yeah, um.
Please. I know you told me once.
Yeah, so diurnal would be the cycle throughout the day. So this is a, all six of those critical days averaged out on their hourly data. Critical day for the red and then all other days for the blue. So just the daily cycle of it and aggregate for all monitors. And then the, the same analysis for the NH3. This one's a little confusing, um, and I, I think we can attribute it to having just not a very large body of data we're doing analysis on, but the NH3 uh, is actually lower on a normal day up until about 10 AM and then they're pretty much the same for the rest of the day. So. This, this table or these three tables are kind of where the money's at. The highlighted numbers at the bottom, if, if the council wishes to move forward with a code adoption and my recommendation is that we don't even consider that right now. These numbers are the numbers at which we receive the complaints. So we've done the statistical analysis on all these, so. The 95th percentile of H2S means that if you take um, 10 minute hourly or 10 minute average data for the critical days, those six days we've talked about, you take all the data on average every 10 minutes and you line that data up from lowest all the way up to the highest, the 95th percentile means that 95% of the numbers in that big line, big long line of numbers are going to be at or below eight parts per billion. So that's where the eight comes from. And I know there's some statisticians out there that are just rubbing their temples because that was terrible, but that's the gist of it. Same can be said for the 98th percentile and the 99 and a half percentile of readings. So we have identified with pretty good confidence. The readings at the monitors and the specific wind directions that are going to trigger complaints.
And make sure I understand what, what you're saying.
Hmm.
So. This is just on the days that trigger complaints.
Right.
What these, what these are. This is not a 95th percentile of all operations.
Right.
So how does, since presumably we have data, how, how do the complaint days compare with from a, I mean, that same analysis, the percentile versus not?
I don't have that data handy, um, I can certainly get it.
I would be curious to answer that.
Pardon me, I'm going to scratch this down, so forget it. We can dig into that for sure. So the, the three thresholds or the three constituents who are modern, they're on the three tables and the three tiers at which we receive complaints, those are highlighted at the bottom. This I think is what you guys were asking about earlier, um. So this slide shows for H2S, the temporal variations. So what is the concentrations at these monitors? On days of the week, all data, this is not just the critical days, this is all data. And so this kind of gets what you're talking to, Mr. Manabon, but it doesn't have the number. On all days, we can see that H2S is generally lower in the morning or on Mondays up until all about five, 6 PM, it spikes and it's done spiking around noon on Wednesday. And we have um, since the middle of October is worth of data to support this, so. While there is some variation, we, we would certainly be better to have more data, fairly confident that this can be attributed to operations.
Yeah, but, but when you say spike, is, I mean, that, is that really that high?
No, because if you remember, this is all days, this isn't critical days.
Right.
Two parts per billion is not that high.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said earlier in the presentation.
Complaints, um, complaints are, are triggered usually eight, 12, 17 parts per billion, so, but we can see that generally there is something going on. I'm sure it's routine operation and maintenance of the plant that, that causes this cycle. Nobody's working on Saturdays, we don't have readings on Saturdays, right? We can break it out by hour of the day and then remember this is for all data every day since we started monitoring. We can break it out by the month. We can break it out by the weekday. So this is kind of like this, but with less detail. Yeah. Yeah, it's a great point. We installed the monitors uh, mid-October, the first full month of data that we got was in November. So November, December, January, February, March, those are the datas that this presentation is based off of. I truly don't know what the statistics are going to say, what the data is going to say for the summer months and the months we don't have monitoring on yet. So this is incomplete and everything will change based off of what we get over the summer, everything. Thank you for that. So kind of our next steps and moving forward, I'm wrapping up, I promise you. We're going to set up a new alerting system, so if winds are coming out of this area, we know we're going to have issues. We're going to set up new thresholds that are going to trigger automatic reports and those thresholds are going to be set based off that 95, 98 and 99 and a half percentile table that we, we looked at a couple of minutes ago. And then we're going to update, do some statistical stuff in the system where we're not looking at instantaneous readings always, we can see 10 minute average readings, because while the spikes are important, we want to know what the prolonged spikes are. So if it spikes at a thousand for one second, is that a big deal? Or if it spikes at a hundred for an hour and a half, is that a big deal? Hour and a half, so. We're going to update the risk report instead of having those five neat boxes that all the complaints generally fit into, we're going to um, update that risk report to cover pretty much every side of town that we get complaints on, because it's not isolated to those five boxes. We're going to have the Northwest, Northeast and the South community. And then we're going to, here's the criteria for that updated risk report. So for the Northwest community. When you use Northwest as an example, alright, so for the Northwest community. There is extreme risk of odors for winds that are less than four miles an hour. And winds out of the southeast for the Northwest. For the Northeast community. So generally northeast of the areas we're looking at. If winds are blown from the Southwest at less than four miles an hour, we're going to have a problem.
So Dalton.
Yeah.
Last Friday, just a few days ago, May 3rd, there was heavy fog. And generally that would, just my experience knows. That it could have odors on a more, and, and yet there really wasn't. What did your monitors show? I know that's not in your stack here, but like.
Yeah.
I, I was pleasantly surprised that it was not a bad morning.
Yeah, uh, we're seeing that when there's moisture, rains, fog, low winds, stuff like that, that it does have adverse impact on the monitors, especially swirling winds. We saw that there was readings on the monitors, but we didn't notice um, like the uncontrolled odor, the outrageous odor like you guys are, I think, familiar with, so. I don't have any data on that, but we did, we did notice it on, on the data.
But would, would that be attributable to some improvements that uh?
Yeah, definitely.
Been made?
I, I, I mean, I can't say without a shadow of a doubt, but um, kind of towards the end when we wrap this up, I got some observations and that's kind of in there. So right now, our uh, our modeling domain is shown by this blue dash line. You think, oh, that's plenty big. We're actually getting complaints outside of that modeling domain and I want to be able to say whether or not those are associated with our operation. And so we're going to increase that to a 33 by 33 kilometer domain. We're tying it into some other uh, publicly accessible weather stations to true up the data. And then here's the next step that you're kind of alluding to. So we in NID Neighborhood Inspections, we got a lot of programs that are designed to improve and increase the quality of life. This is not a public health issue, this is a quality of life issue. We, we do view our odor emitters as key stakeholders, uh, so much so that they've, they've got access to the system, they're contributing financially to the system, uh, they are making massive investments into their facilities and it's not really my place to talk, speak to those right now, but they are spending quite a bit of money to improve the conditions out there. Uh, newest and best available control technology, um, ducting, stuff like that, reviewing their operations, so they are very mindful that um, the will of the council is that we have improved quality of life, improved conditions. Uh, the stakeholders have been here for about a hundred years or more and they've watched us grow around them. And I know I talked about this at the beginning, it is not realistic to expect that we fully eliminate odors. Uh, we can take the peaks off and make it not, not smell nearly as bad, but we're never going to eliminate odors just by virtue of what these guys do for, for business.
Uh, Dalton, just um, could you um, remind us of when the, the new um, Smith, Smithfield RTO uh, went online or is that in an upcoming?
Um, I'm going to go back to that one after this next slide, actually. That's okay. So my recommendations here that we gather data until mid-October, we don't know what impact the summer months have on the complaints and on the data that we get. Uh, we're going to pause on enforcement under chapter 42 until we have the data. We can't encourage people to call in and submit complaints and then just trigger an odor alert and have to take enforcement and put somebody under enforcement for a program that we plan to change. So we don't want to be beholden to an old enforcement program. Uh, we're going to refine the system and that, you guys don't necessarily care about this, but we are working on it with Smithfield to refine the system to show more easily what's going on. And then we're going to work with communications due to another communications push on this one, we're going to be very focused on how people describe the odors. So um, not everything is putrid, rotting, bad cooking meat. So almost all the complaints we get, putrid, rotting, bad cooking meat. Well, I smelled that today and that was definitely, that was definitely not putrid, rotting, bad cooking meat.
It was batteries.
Right. Energizers, yeah. Alright, um. I'm going to go back to this to show. And this is what you were kind of alluding to, Mr. Boss. Uh, Smithfield completed a pretty huge project back in the middle of February. Summary is it's a big old furnace that burns off the odors before the gas leaves our plant or the air leaves our plant. So they finished that install in mid-February. And you can see that since they finished that, we have not had any um, critical days. And remember, this does not include most April data. We have not had critical days and the volume of complaints that we've been receiving is significantly lower. So.
Have you had critical days in April, you just weren't able to put it on here?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know yet?
No, I'm sorry. So I mean, we can, we've seen. Again, small body of data, but we have seen that there's been an improvement in the number of complaints that we've received since the, the system went online. Uh, Darling is undergoing an equally huge uh, improvement on their facilities, so it's not for lack of want or effort on these guys' part, they're, they are generally working with us on this stuff, so they aren't, this is not oppositional, working together, stakeholders. Any questions? That was kind of the end.
I just would say, thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
You've worked extremely hard, you and your team on this and. And to be able to gather all this, uh, after talking about it for, I mean, 10 years I've sat here. I know Carl and I've really been focused on it the last three or four and you've brought it all together. So, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, definitely.
Usually doesn't happen that way, so I'm very pleased with the data and, and how you handled.
Well, thank you.
Boy, I think it's gone on for many, many years.
Well, I mean, just.
Yeah, no, but I just think that the data that they've collected and putting a system in place so that we accurately, not just by, oh, it smells bad.
Putrid.
Yeah, rotten or whatever. So I think collecting the data and making it more scientific and understanding what, than we can do. And I want to thank the companies, is it Smithfield and Darling for the actual efforts that they've done to help solve some of the issues. It's clear that it's made significant, you know, improvement. And I think even for probably the people that work in the environment that they're in. So, uh, we want to thank them for helping be a part of this and to help our quality of life issues become better in Des Moines. And thank you Dalton and your team and Chris and everybody for the work they've done. Cause it, there's a lot of information.
Yeah.
And just one thing on, on the monitors where we have them, is there a chance that the monitors would go into other areas?
Yes.
Okay. So this is our test and we could go out further.
Scott.
Yeah, there is a cost and so.
Always.
But.
Nothing's great.
Shocking. Right. So it's a matter of, uh, understanding what we can get out of these 10 monitors.
Right.
And quite possibly add to those because I don't see us necessarily taking those 10 away.
Okay.
Uh, two things, uh, Dalton. Um, so we have employees in two buildings that are right, uh, right in the epicenter here of, of what has been historically the worst of the odors. Um, so are, do you have, um, employees in either MSC or MSC two that are, that are helpful, that have a good nose for this?
I do, yep.
So employees, city employees are also able to, to make reports, um, to phone in or email in complaints.
Yep. Uh, and so there's a few times where I'll look at the monitors and there'll be 20 parts per billion with the wind out of the southwest. Well, what's that mean? So I'll get on Teams before I can get over there, the wind could change. So I'll get on Teams real quick and message a few coworkers, peers, buddies. What's it smell like over there? Actually not that bad or pretty darn bad, man. So, um, we're truing up the data anecdotally with observations from city staff, yeah.
Okay. And for, uh, Chris, uh, put a huge atta boy in Dalton's file on this. I mean, this has been, um, yeah, and I know some of it, the, um, the technology had to move before we could move toward this, but, but thanks so much.
If I may, I got one more thing. I know as a resident, I hear, oh, the city's going to do another study. It's like, gosh, we study things to death and people are probably looking at that RK associate study saying, good Lord, we did another study and now we're doing another study. There were results out of that study. So we mapped out the complaints, the risk areas, identified the three stakeholders. And then after that study, we represented that to council in November, November 22nd of 2022. We met with each of the three stakeholders that are here right now over at the MSC. And we said, what are we doing, guys? We met with them and our consultant and, um, like Todd with Wickman, they changed their operations. And so the nature of the complaints that we're getting now are not associated with Wickman Pig. Now they're still in the area, they're good partners and he's here just to hear what's going on. But there was noticeable major improvement from odors just off of that study identifying what conversations to have. So, um, rest assured, we're not just studying this thing to death. We are moving on it. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Wanted to say thank you to Casey as well. I know he's got the lift on this as well.
Casey's done the lifting on this. Appreciate that, but Casey's done most of it.
Thank you.
Okay. And we will, uh, I think we are done with the work session and we reconvene at 4:45 for our regular meeting. So thank everyone for being here and thank you for your, uh, again, all the work you've been doing.